...adjourned open session. Moved by Sarah, seconded by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first selectmen's report. I'd like to extend a very warm welcome back to the town of Darien for our new public library director, Kira Perro. Kira worked at the Darien Library from 2008 to 2013 as the children's librarian before leaving to work at the Library Journal and School Library Journal. We welcome her back and we look forward to our continued partnership with her and the Darien Library. Tomorrow, the legislature is being called back into special session. And there is a lengthy agenda for special session, which just came out a few days ago. I'm gonna run through these because I think it's important to publicize. The first item will be to establish a performance-based regulation to hold the state's electricity, gas, and water companies accountable for the critical services they provide to customers. Item number two, ensuring local officials may administer absentee ballots in a secure and orderly manner during the November 2020 general election. Item number three, authorizing school construction projects. And on that list is the Ox Ridge Elementary School project, which is good news. Item number four is updating the state's transfer act. Item number five, aligning Connecticut's hemp program with federal law and providing opportunities for hemp growers and manufacturers in the state. Number six, updating the state's environmental justice law to require public notice and community benefit agreements in certain circumstances. Item number seven, providing greater protection for employees in occupations engaged in construction on certain non-residential building, heavy or highway works projects in Connecticut. Number eight, permitting homeowners associations to obtain loans through the supplemental collapsing foundation loan program. Number nine, permitting some late property tax exemptions to be filed with towns. And number ten, clarifying the ability of state marshals to recover costs for searching records of the Department of Motor Vehicles. I have not received any information on any of these items, so I can't give you any further detail on these. What I will say from an inquiry from CCM this afternoon that the seven, the greater protections for employees occupations engaged in construction on certain non-residential building projects is actually about prevailing wage. They're looking to alter the prevailing wage, the formula for how they determine what prevailing wage is. And CCM is quite concerned about that, so I'll be very interested in that debate. Along with these ten action items, there are also going to be four judicial nominations, all in the span of, I wanna say, two days without public hearings. As hopefully you all know that we're having on Saturday, October 3rd, from 2:00 to 6:00, Rocktoberfest. It's our first special event at Highland Farms. It's going to be the official opening of Highland Farms. Obviously, people are excited to get out because it's sold out already. There is a waiting list, though. And I want to assure everyone that the safety plan has been approved by our local health director. And basically, everybody's gonna be in ten-foot circles, fifteen feet apart. So it should be a lovely and very safe event on Saturday. The first item on the legislative agenda is about the performance of our utilities. And on behalf of our resident and business customers of Eversource, I've added our support for a motion filed with PURA by Ridgefield, Newtown, and New Fairfield seeking emergency relief against Eversource to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare in response to breakdowns of emergency response by the utility before and during storm ECEs. As a cog, we are asking for three very specific actions. Critically important, to deploy make-safe crews to municipalities. That's happened in all storms prior. It did not happen in this storm, and it was very problematic. And if you wanna know what a make-safe crew is, I'm happy to tell you. The second thing is to implement and support the community liaison program to provide timely and accurate and consistent information to local governments, including delays to restoration times. Communication plan meetings should be held with each municipality before every storm event. And number three, implement an outage reporting system that allows customers to actually report their outages by phone, web, or text, and to provide timely and accurate outage and restoration information to the public. This has been a big deal for the state. Every municipality was extremely discouraged by the response efforts from Eversource and United Illuminating. So the legislature feels the need to intervene now. In addition to that, I continue to dialogue with our Altice, Optimum, and Verizon representatives to help identify areas in town that have very poor cable internet and wireless service. Interesting to note that my street seems to be particularly affected by Verizon Wireless. And I'm told that the Ospreys are nesting on the tower at the transfer station. So there's repairs that are needed there that can't happen until the Ospreys are no longer nesting, which was a problem at the police communication tower some years ago, too. Thought that you would appreciate that color. But along with the breakdown of our electric utility, all the other utility restorations follow that. And so cable and phone doesn't get restored until electric gets restored. And so everybody needs to be working together. So one thing that's not in this support letter to PURA that I've requested of the cog is that we focus on that coordination with the other utilities. Because in this day and age, we need to have phone and internet service for people working from home. I wanna wish our students, parents, teachers, and administrators well on the eve of the full reopening tomorrow. Hopefully, everything will go smoothly. I know everyone's working hard to make sure that happens. And thank goodness that we have not reported any new COVID cases since September 15th. So hopefully, everybody can feel a little bit more secure about that. I know that there is a potential case in the Middlesex middle school community, and some students are quarantining. That case has not made it through the state reporting system yet. So we will get it when it gets reported. But the important note there is that everybody who has had a potential exposure has been identified and is quarantining at home. It's from Kate.
Just a couple things. We are getting negotiations again with public works. They had been postponed almost immediately after the COVID shutdown. So we will be meeting with them virtually tomorrow. And we continue to prepare to increase access, public access to the town hall. Some departments, due to space restrictions, will stay on a by appointment only basis. Most departments will have limited walk-in access during the day and then by appointment only could balance the day. So any member of the public wishing to come into town hall should call ahead to the department that they're going to, they wanna visit, to make sure that they are open. That would start Monday. And following that, the following week, October 13th, we will begin being open on Tuesday nights until 7:00 PM. And that's it.
Okay.
Question for you. Is it possible to maybe put some of that information on our homepage for the town?
We will be doing that. I wanted to talk to you, tell you first, but then, yes. And every department has been instructed to put their specific plans on their webpage.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any reports from our board commission liaisons this evening?
I do. I had submitted it to Kate, but I wasn't sure if it'd like me to...
I'd love for you to report.
The update from the Farby Youth Task Force. The last meeting was this past Thursday, September 25th. Task Force discussed the mission to promote and empower positive youth development. Critical needs will be identified among youth, and interventions will be identified to develop protective assets in our youth. A variety of youth in Darien will be identified and be asked to give feedback to the task force regarding these critical needs. The group broke up into smaller groups to discuss how COVID has affected our youth in elementary, middle, and high school. The representatives spoke about how the fear of the illness and loss of social connection are affecting our youth. The group discussed ways to build community and culture through events, as well as tools to give our families to provide support. Our community has so many agencies and groups that are working to provide for our town, youth, and families. Community events can be found at the YWCA community calendar. And our next meeting is slated for November 19th.
Thank you very much.
Sarah, was it Thursday or Friday? You have Thursday the 25th, but Thursday is the 24th.
Right, Thursday the 24th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from Blate? No? Okay. And Kate?
I have in my hand
Is it?
the working draft, bill number 3970, talking about how they're gonna approve or discuss the various estimated grants to these school projects. Now, I'd be happy to show them, pass it around. I see $209 million worth of grants. I see percentages moving from a high of 72% of eligible cost down to a low of 10.7. That's where we are of eligible costs. However, these two pages don't tell the story. The rest of it's all hidden back here. Where we find that the Norwalk High School, estimated to cost $225,890,000, will be awarded an 80% eligibility grant. And Danbury, which will do a new career development academy, career academy, for $99, is it $99 million? Will be also granted an 80% reimbursement rate. So I haven't had time to add all these various numbers up, but obviously, the grants that are being considered by the state are much more than $200 million. So whether this all gets passed or doesn't get passed is a big concern to us because obviously, our little $6.7 million is of concern to us. And I've asked Terry to inform me as to what are the chances the funding is gonna happen for all of this or part of it. So we'll soon find out.
Kate, have you communicated with our entire delegation to and encourage their support of our modest grant?
Well, I'll be talking with two of our delegations tomorrow morning.
Okay.
About dirt.
Okay.
That is... I'm talking with, Wayne has set up a call with myself and ONG to talk with Senator Duff and Senator Lyon.
Okay.
And we'll mention this at the time.
Great.
Okay. And I also got a copy from the CCM about the change of the wage issue. And that's not good because right now, we estimate, and this is rough. I'll get better information from our contractors that our prevailing wage ends up costing 30% more for labor costs than it would be if we didn't have the prevailing wage in Connecticut. If we go to the New York, Massachusetts rule, which is what they're proposing, in other words, it'll be driven by union dominance rate rather than a negotiated concept. It'll be even higher, the cost increase. So we're kind of concerned about that. That's all I have to report right now.
Thank you. And Krista, I know that the committee for Pear Tree has not been active, but they haven't been disbanded, so...
Okay, fair enough. That is fair enough. The conversation has been tabled.
Well, I think they're working on the state approvals, what it would take to get the state approvals for raising the parking lot, at least that...
Yes, we have not met, and there have been no recent communications from the chair.
Terrance, well, that we have to get you engaged on something. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Discuss and take action on a proposal to prohibit the use of pesticides at Highland Farm. That also includes the use of organic fertilizers. And I think many of you know that the folks who are associated with the Pollinator Pathway wanna partner with us. And I think it would be wonderful to use Highland Farm as a demonstration project. What I can't tell you, because we haven't received the information yet, is how that impacts the operational costs. Obviously, it would be a reduction in the cost of fertilizer, but potentially, an increase in the cost of, sorry, a reduction in the cost of pesticides and an increase in the cost of organic fertilizer. The one issue that arose was the fact that along the stone walls, there's quite a bit of poison ivy. And we had, I had asked Juliette if we could eradicate the poison ivy with some kind of weed killer. And they really would prefer us to not do that. They gave us an alternative of some kind of vinegar solution. But we haven't gotten feedback yet from Jim Flynn in Parks and Rec to know if that's feasible at all. So I'm willing to move forward with our best intent to make Highland Farm a demonstration project of no pesticides and organic fertilizers only. But probably with the caveat that, you know, we have to make sure that we watch the turf carefully. And if there's any reason why that protocol would cause a safety issue, I think that's what we might hear from Jim Flynn. He's meticulous about the care he takes with our fields. And he would tell you that without at least a once-per-year application of pesticides, sometimes the grubs and other insects can degrade the turf in a way that could create an unsafe environment. But I think that we should give it a chance and see if that's possible. So we have a resolution before us, but I wanna open it up for discussion and comment before we take a vote.
I don't have any objection, but I guess, yes, I would like to know the cost impact and to better understand the pros and cons of the two.
Love the idea of benefiting the Pollinator Pathway in town. It'd be great to know the cost impact after.
Someone has to explain to me why organic fertilizers versus phosphate and nitrogen, which are elements, are materially different. Organic fertilizer using, you know, blood and manure and all that is much more expensive. And you've got a 16-acre field. Really? Organic fertilizer on 16 acres? I just think that's sort of a bridge too far. I'm happy to understand having the pollinator along the meadow that we're gonna build along the side according to landscaping plan. But I would urge that the cost be understood and the consequences.
Yeah. Fair enough. Anybody else? Any comments about that?
And I know how to kill poison ivy.
My thought about those adorable little goats, but I don't think they'd be safe along the roadway.
You have to cut the vine.
I'm not going near it. I'm highly allergic.
Yeah, no.
I'm highly allergic. That's why I am.
Okay.
Because you got it twice a year as a kid.
All right. Well, certainly, this will become, should become a budget discussion item. But in the interim, we will get information for you about what the impacts are going to be with this demonstration project of no pesticides and organic fertilizer only. You know, it could be that we may not need to use with any frequency a fertilizer application anyway. So I wanna have Jim tell us what his protocol will be for the use of fertilizers. And, you know, the one area that, you know, compels me, too, is that the state requires on school properties for kids K through 8 that they're not allowed to use pesticides on school fields. So I get the incongruence of the fact that we use them on town properties that the kids of the same age utilize those fields. So I'm willing to support this effort. If there are no other comments or questions about it, our motion is before us that Board of Selectment approves the request to prohibit the use of pesticides at Highland Farm and to permit the use only of organic fertilizer. May I have a motion to approve? Sarah moves. Do they have a second? No second?
I think I'd rather understand, I would abstain because I'd rather understand the financial impact and how we wanna leave this out.
Okay.
You know, clearly, I'm not gonna go against it, but...
Okay, well, we don't have a strong second here, so we're gonna hold on this until we can get more information from Jim Flynn on costs and pros and cons.
Or an advocate.
Is that fair enough?
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right. All right, discuss the format of the joint department heads' meetings. So this is our opportunity to give Kate some feedback on how we can make our meetings reduce the time for the staff and for us, but still have them be of value. They are mandated by charter.
One of the things that sometimes comes up is that during the discussion with a department head, something will come up and it will lead to questions. Though I'm loathe to not have anyone give a verbal report, it can be difficult because it can be timely for each of the department heads. One of the things that wasn't one of the suggestions was to maybe split and have, you know, one half at this meeting and another half at another meeting. And I'm not sure how that would be received, but it is fine. And I don't know if it's gonna be then three hours for half of that and then another three hours.
I think one of the things... I asked department heads, you know, with the condition that they would remain anonymous, to give me their comments. And one of the comments I thought was, one person had a couple comments that I thought were really... They really hit one of the, some of the problems. When you approach the podium, people feel compelled to speak. And if you get one department head or two department heads who talk a lot, the other department heads feel, well, I have to as well. So I think some of it may come from, instead of asking them to stand up and speak, if it started by, you know, this is, you're looking at the finance department, and do you have any questions? Rather than asking them to come forward and, or you ask them, do you have any highlights, anything that's not your report you need to tell us? Do the board members have any questions? I think we can get department heads to make some changes in terms of if there are things that need to be highlighted. Start out your report with, instead of, you know, going into all your statistics and details, start it out with, you should pay particular attention to this on page five of my report, or something like that. So if there's something that they feel really important, draw your eyes to it right away.
What is the current length of time that you request the reports to be in to you before a meeting?
We ask them to be in the Wednesday before the meeting, so less than a week. And so that's something that we could change very easily. Well, we're gonna maybe ask very easily. Some people might grumble, but definitely, we can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to have us get them seven days in advance of the meeting.
So you wanna receive them...
On the Tuesday before.
You want to receive them
Yes.
On the Tuesday, right?
Yep. And that way, maybe we can identify amongst us particular department heads that we might wanna speak to. So I wanna give a little history here, too. When I first joined the Board of Selectment, we'd have the joint department heads' meetings. And every department head would stand up and say, I have nothing further to add. Which, in a time when we didn't have TV 79, was fine. You know, the board all had the reports in front of them. And it didn't matter. But the meetings have changed, and they've now become a public forum for the public to really understand the inner workings of the departments on a quarterly basis. So I appreciate that we publish the reports online. I think that's really important for the public to see. I like very much, Kate, the idea of highlights. And I think that's how I started out. I've said, well, you can't say, I have nothing further to add. Please give us a couple highlights from your report. So I really like that idea. And I would, I think that we could start there. And that certainly, we can test that out and see if we can move that along. What I don't wanna do is I don't wanna preclude anybody from this board asking the questions that you have. But if you do have questions in advance of the meeting that maybe we can get answers to in advance of the meeting, that could help streamline the process as well.
You know, we'll tell you some of the history. The joint department head meetings used to be at night as part of the regular Board of Selectment meeting. And that was back in the days when the Board of Selectment meetings didn't start until 8:00. And they would sometimes start like we did tonight with an executive session meeting with people. And we would sometimes be sitting here at 8:30, you know, still not happening.
And they're done that, yep.
So that's where some of the, you know, stand-up, sit-down, get-out came from. I think another thing that would be really helpful is, if you have questions, be prepared to ask them. Because one thing that I've noticed, sitting and watching, is when somebody's standing up there, especially if they're standing at a podium, they might say, you know, everything's in my report, but I'll answer questions. And if you don't jump in right away, and there's this pause, they start talking.
I'll speak for myself. If we're gonna get the reports seven days in advance, I would be happy to submit written questions, you know, in advance. And unless something comes up in the verbal comments that the department head makes that's different or stokes a question that I hadn't already thought of from reading the report, that might facilitate, if other folks can, are willing and able to do that.
And if we get the questions in advance, we can circulate them, the answers to all members of the board.
Okay. My only concern with that is that are we then having a meeting amongst ourselves via email? Because we are submitting group questions, and we're receiving group answers as a body via email. I like the idea of submitting the questions. I'm concerned about the communication all being electronic.
You know, I'll check with Wayne and his thoughts on that, but you wouldn't be submitting the questions to your fellow board members. You'd submit them to me or sitting in our office. We would then distribute them to department heads. And if it's a problem to distribute the answers to all of you via email, it won't...
That's not a problem.
It's not a shitty problem because...
That's not a discussion.
It's not a discussion, yeah. And it's the same thing as sending your attendant out.
Okay, so that's just a dissemination of information. But if anybody had a question, then...
It's when you go back and forth with one another.
Right. I just didn't want that then to provoke a question amongst, from somebody else that starts a dialogue. That would be my concern.
But you don't have to do that, do you?
Yeah.
But we've seen this happen. That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, I think what I'm hearing Kate propose is that each of us would individually send our questions to her.
Right.
She would distribute them, and then the answers would go out to everyone. So I wouldn't necessarily see your questions until the answers came out.
That's correct.
Right, but we can't have this back and forth, which we do see electronically.
My feeling is that you should have, every report should start out with key issues. Same thing as highlights. Key issues in the front. Whatever's important this month, rather than just the usual stuff. And there's some people that always do that anyway, but that should be more of the, so that we know what we're talking, what's important in the last three months. I would say that my feeling is that if we have these, we have these reports by Friday noon, that's more than enough time for us to get back, because these meetings are on Tuesday.
Yes.
It's more than enough time to get back to you by noon on Monday with our questions.
Might not be enough time to get the answers to the questions.
Well, I mean, but the answers, okay, I mean, okay, I just feel that...
Or is it, is that enough time?
Well, I guess the question would be, it might be enough time. Well, I guess the question would be, it might be enough time, theoretically it should be enough time. Would you want those questions answered publicly at your meeting?
I'm just gonna have the verbal answers at the meeting, right? I don't need a written report. Unless it's something so complicated you really need to, you know, to explain it in, in writing, that's a more complicated thing. But I mean, for example, if you say, okay, Pete, how come, how come, uh, in this quarter we have, uh, many more, um, I don't know, building permits, which, residential building permits than we expected. I mean, what's, what's, what's happened in the market? Well, that's, that's an easy explanation for him to give verbally. I don't need a written report on that. I don't wanna make people have to do more work. I just wanna make sure that whatever the key questions are, are kind of answered or highlighted, started and answered. The other part is that, um, the, the, the department heads don't, all departments don't have to give a verbal report if they don't want to, it seems to me. But that's, that may be more important to have them appear in public, because now you are showing them on, in a public hearing and so they, people in the town will know what they do and who they are, and, you know, if I have a problem with this, I can go to that person. Maybe that's a good thing. The last part is, it's also the responsibility of a board member to remember our roles here as policy determinators. We're not operations persons. The old phrase is noses in, noses in but fingers out. And that our job, no, but we're not, we're not, we're, we're not gonna be, I'm not running, I don't run the Department of Public Works, and I don't expect to. I just wanna understand the policy issues that are affected. Uh, and that's, I think it's important for us to make sure that we follow our roles here as well as the, uh, people in the town responding. That's my feeling.
I think we can work with that. You know, if people submit questions and then the department, the, you know, requisite department head answers those questions in public during the meeting, that should be fine. We don't need to, if everybody's comfortable not going with getting a written response to your question, it'll be answered orally at the meeting. I think that's, that's perfectly fine.
I like that, and I think it helps the public also, because they may read the report, have the same question, and they didn't get the answer because it was electronic to us. Um, so I think it does help the public in general.
And I do think that if we have them put their highlights at the top of their report, Kate, then, um, we'll be accepting of the, I have nothing further to add statement by a department head, I suppose. So we'll give that a try?
Give it a try.
Give it a try.
So we'll get a report by Tuesday? Is that what we're gonna work with, or Friday?
So the next meeting is, um.
Wait, by the Tuesday prior or the Friday prior?
We typically get them by.
We, we ask for them to, right now we're asking for them to come in the Wednesday before.
And then they get disseminated to us on Thursday or Friday.
Right, so we're gonna be asking them right now to come in on the fourteenth, so we can ask for them to come, we haven't sent the request out yet. I mean, they should all know it's coming. So I can ask them to have them in to us on the thirteenth.
Which, which day is that?
That's a Tuesday.
I think it, yeah, I think if they could be distributed to us no later than Thursday, would be better, in my opinion.
Yep, plenty of time.
And then we'd email you by Monday?
Yep.
And then they'd have Monday afternoon to address any questions, responses?
Yeah.
If that's enough time, yeah.
Okay, anything else on this topic? Okay, great, thank you. Yep. Okay, um, new business item number three, discuss and take action on a request to accept a donation of a print, an art print, to the police department. The letter is in your packet, and the print is, in support of Tunnels to Towers Foundation, and it's worth a hundred dollars. So I think what I'd like to first do is acknowledge, uh, Mr. Carl Gespon. I'm guessing at the pronunciation, so I apologize if I've gotten that wrong, um, but I wanna thank him very much for his thoughtful donation to the Darien Police Department. Does anyone have any questions about accepting the donation of this print?
Yeah, we'll do it.
One que, what is the value we have to be, I mean, why is it even before us? A hundred dollars, isn't that fine for the commission to approve?
No, they don't have the right to accept. So because that question came up about the gifts, but the police commission is not one that has the authority to accept gifts.
Oh, okay.
So we will need to discuss the whole thing around the gifts in the process at a future date.
Just up on it.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve accepting this gift. David moves.
Second.
Okay, who was that?
David moved, Kip seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, um, old business, discuss and take action on a request from the Nuroton Fire Department for a parade on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we had some outstanding questions relating to this, correct?
They should be answered on, paid for the sample motion.
Anniversary parade, hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary parade. The time was chosen, so, uh, it would be convenient for the party afterward. Uh, the only thing, uh, that I, I don't see here is a good explanation of how easy or difficult it's going to be to close off those exit ramps from I ninety-five.
Right, right, so I talked to Captain Marin about it, and, um, he said it, it is relatively easy if the state approves, and what they, um, what they do is they actually, they block off the exit ramp down at the entrance, so, so that people can't even come up the ramp.
Right.
But if, if they can't do that, they do periodically, what they would do is stop the parade, let the people off the highway, move the parade along. So obviously the best thing is to be able to stop them, stop the entrances, but they haven't even approached the state yet because they don't have the approval for the parade yet.
So logistically, they mentioned the closing the northbound, uh, exit nine, uh, I ninety-five at exit ten north.
Yes.
But logistically, they're gonna close the street that accesses by post fifty-three as well, right? Because the parade is passing down, you can't have traffic getting on ninety-five south, right? And then they're gonna have to close the southbound exit also, lest the traffic come off the southbound exit and end up right in front of Jags.
Queuing up there.
With no place to go.
Yeah.
And I guess the only exit that theoretically could remain open would be the one on the other side, because you could theoretically come from the police department side and still take that exit to go northbound.
Correct. Yep, both north and southbound. Interests and, entrances and exits will need to be closed off. Um, I'm going to trust that the Darien Police Department or the Commission as the local traffic authority will be working very closely with the Fire Department on all that.
And they did approve it.
Did.
They had approved it prior to coming to you.
Lot of people, a lot of trucks.
Yeah, a lot.
Yes.
Four hundred people.
That's the Fire Department reason.
Lot of local departments.
Oh, you'll get them from a good distance, too.
Uh, well, they'd have to be with twenty or twenty-five departments now.
I think so.
Okay, are there any other questions on this item?
My question was about the financing, which we had discussed here, so it's in their budget. They budgeting for it?
Yeah, the Fire Department will pay, and it is not coming from the grant funds. It's part of their own fundraising.
Oh, their own fundraising, I'm sorry, okay.
There are no further questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Nuroton Fire Department's hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary parade scheduled for June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Krista moves. Sarah seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, okay, we have discuss and take action on a request to transfer seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars to the Darien Fire Department Vehicle Repairs. We asked for more information on this transfer last time, so, um, hopefully the notes satisfy the explanation. If you have any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars from Training Services and Uniforms to Vehicle Maintenance and Repair. David moves. Do you have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, um, parking authority business, discuss request to address permits unused during the pandemic. And I think we talked about this briefly last time, and, um, we have a suggested motion in our packet uh, to extend the expiration of the twenty twenty train station parking permits until the end of March twenty twenty-one, which will obviously reduce our annual revenue, uh, when we do renew those parking permits.
My, my only question is on the, on the attachment, the second column says rebate, uh, which, you know, to me, the word rebate means that's the amount that you're giving back, not the amount, not the amount you're charging.
Correct. So what that is, is if you get a permit and you turn it in, we give you back a portion of what you paid depending on when you turned it in.
So if you get a new permit.
Right, so if you get a permit in twenty twenty-one, you get a twenty twenty-one permit, and I saw a typo just now in the motion, uh, if you get it on April first,
Right.
and you turn it in, you would get a pro rata refund based on which one you turn it in.
Okay.
So I'm thinking your question might be those.
So if it's three hundred dollars.
Do we need to revisit the, the rebate column?
Are the, are the percentages off?
It's just thirty-three dollars a month, which is what.
The percentages are based on the four hundred dollar, okay, so the percentage should be correct.
Yeah, it's three hundred dollars, thirty-three dollars per month is what you're giving back, or what you're saying, people are charging. So if the person pays three hundred dollars in April one and leaves by Sep-, uh, October one,
They get a hundred dollars back.
They get a hundred dollars back, or by September thirty, they get a hundred dollars back.
Okay.
But obviously you've got somebody else coming in at that time, too.
So we're, but we're not, we're not issuing rebates here. We're just, we're giving them an extra three months on their twenty twenty. So when they renew, are they gonna renew it at a three hundred dollar rate?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't.
That was, that was why I included that, because.
So you could see the value.
So you can see that we're not gonna charge four hundred dollars for the nine-month period.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that, that's what was confusing me. So we're not actually giving a rebate, we're just giving them the lower fee.
Yeah, this is just a tool for you to see the value of the permit at that top, point in time.
So if they, if they, if they came off the waiting list, October one, they'd pay a hundred dollars for the balance of the year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I think, so we just ignore the rebate column then.
Sarah, did you have a question?
It's been answered.
Okay.
That I understand.
Okay, um, is there any further discussion about, um, postponing or extending the, the permit year until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one? Um, the only thing that I'd like to add here is, so much is unknown, and, um, I think we should plan for this, but let's revisit the actual situation in January to see where we are with the status of parking.
Yeah, because when do you, when do you have to put out a notification for the call, the, the April one?
If we're going to do the, you know, new permits on April one, we would wanna be sending out letters in February. So you will need to revisit, if, if conditions don't change, you should definitely revisit it in January.
Okay, yeah, just wanna make sure I have the timing right.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
You can make a motion.
Okay, to say April first? All right, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to amend the suggested motion to reflect uh, that the period is from April first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Sarah moves.
Second.
Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, and now I will entertain a motion to approve the amended motion.
So moved.
Kip moves. May I have a second? Sarah seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Transfer request, uh, for a transfer of seven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars to training. This is for the Darien Police Department, and the transfer is from full-time salary to training services. Kate, would you like to give us any color? The explanation is pretty self-explanatory.
State law requires if we, um, poached an officer from another community with less than two years of service in the other community, that we are required to reimburse that community for, um, the appropriate portion of their training expense. We have a new officer starting. Uh, we met this morning. He will be starting next week, and he's coming from the Cheshire Police Department. So this is to fund our payment to the town of Cheshire's, city, Town of Cheshire.
And, uh, the, the availability of funds and the full-time salaries, because we had already, we had already budgeted for hiring, but he's just starting later, so we have the funds.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve this transfer.
So moved.
Krista moves. May I have a second? Sarah seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Welcome.
Yep. Okay, we have an appointment this evening of Mr. Michael Lamalt to the Human Service Commission for a term expiring on November thirtieth, twenty twenty, and a subsequent term expiring on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Moved with enthusiasm.
May I have a second on that?
Enthusiastic second.
Okay, um, that was David. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. He'll be an excellent addition to the Human Service Commission. Okay, we have, uh, minutes of our regular meeting of September fourteenth. Any corrections or additions?
I gave Kate my, my, mostly typos.
Typos.
Okay.
One word that I couldn't understand is handwriting.
Fines.
Okay, um, nothing substantive then, I would say, is that correct?
Correct.
Any other corrections or additions?
On the first paragraph where it says positive cases of college students who have tested before returning to an out-of-state school, we don't, we're, we're not saying have tested positive before returning to the school, right? When I first read this, I thought, wait, they tested positive before they went back to school?
Yeah, that is what we're saying.
So if they test positive before they return to school?
Why would they go to school?
They were tested before they returned to school.
They're tested.
The test results are positive.
Oh, so they were tested before, we don't have the results yet?
Right.
And then we get the results, they'll be included here anyway.
Correct, and, and, and the same is true of, of kids that are at school.
Right, right.
Who get tested at school, who test positive, it gets reported here also. So though, they're, they're working those out with DPH to get them off of our data list. If that, if that individual has not returned to the state of Connecticut.
Got it.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve our regular meeting minutes as amended.
So moved.
Kip moves. May I have a second? Sarah, Sarah, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, and our, uh, special meeting minutes of September fourteenth. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Yep, second?
Second.
I saw Sarah lose her hand over there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any public comment this evening, Kate?
No, nobody, emails aren't registered.
Okay, thank you. Um, agenda review, I wanna follow up. Um, I've been talking with Commissioner Huffer, and she has suggested that we meet with the Police Commission on the twenty-ninth of October at their meeting to be able to answer any of the questions that we have, David, including the questions that you have outstanding. So if you could check your calendars for, their meetings are typically at four P M. And I'm not sure, but I think that meeting will be here in this room.
Date again is October?
Ne- twenty-ninth. Twenty-nine.
Twenty-ninth.
Yep.
Thursday.
Okay.
Any other agenda items? Sarah?
Just out of curiosity, I think it may be helpful if possible to have our Health Director David Novcom and explain the, kind of the process by which he's receiving the data from the state, when it is posted and how that has changed because it is significantly different from the beginning when he was getting daily updates and it is not anymore. And I do think, you know, people were questioning, well, how come the school had a case and they do their own contact tracing, but I would really like to maybe help spread the information as far as how those are reported and how often it comes back weekly.
Would you be open to him reporting that to us at our joint department heads meeting?
Absolutely.
David lives in Long Island.
Oh, goodness.
And so if we could avoid making him stay for our evening meeting?
Yes, if he would be willing to give a longer report.
Right.
Yeah, put him on your regular agenda in addition to...
Yeah, on the board, we, you know, we have the department heads.
He's able to call in even, that's fine, I just...
No, he'd be here, but just...
He would be here, it would just be at our, you know, when we have the, we have the joint department heads meeting and then the board...
Oh, that's three foot more, yeah, got it.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Time him to report last and put in, you know, first new business.
Sure, absolutely, let him go. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think we have a lot of...
And I'm sure that Kate wrote down what you were interested in, but if you wanna codify that in an email to us, we can make sure we get that to David and he can be prepared. That's fine.
Thank you.
So we can be ordinances changed.
Yes.
Which one?
We have a few things that we would like to bring forward to the Board of Selectmen that would require a charter change, small things really, operational things. And so I think what we're going to do is we, we'd like to ask for the Board of Selectmen to begin to review the charter and come with any selection, uh, recommendations on, on things to potentially modify with, through the RTM. You know, Kate, I don't know if you wanna tease that up with a couple of items that we've been thinking about?
Well, we've had a request from the Mindless Ceremonies Commission to consider reducing the size of the commission.
Right.
We also noted an inconsistency in the code as it relates to the pension. If you're not aware, the library employees are members of our town pension. The language in the code basically prohibits them from serving as the employee representative to the pension board or to even vote on the representative to the pension board, which is problematic since our current employee representative is a library employee. Very much so. So it would be, it would be good to get that changed. And there are just other things that, you know, I've seen and I think you should all take a look and if there are things that you've seen that we would like to change, we should begin the process. Some of them will be complicated. The gifts appear in the charter, appear, some ordinances, there's inconsistencies and that could be a big change. So I think we should start to talk about it, perhaps at one of your meetings in November, start lining these things up, knock off the ones that are easy, but also set up a work plan to take care of the ones that are more difficult.
And I'd, I'd like to recommend that we engage someone from TG SNA to work with us all the way along so that, you know, the RTM understands what our objectives are and they can be well-versed in, when that finally does get to the RTM. We know that the RTM couldn't take these things up in November or December, so we've got plenty of time to work on them.
When was the last time this was reviewed?
Pardon?
When was the last time the charter was reviewed?
Oh, gosh.
Um, thirteen years ago? Yeah, I think it was when Bonnie Climes first elected.
Interesting, okay. It's been a while.
It's been a while, I think. You might be resistant if you look for the entire charter to be reviewed.
Just curious thinking.
Yeah, the RTM undertook the entire process.
And I think that Sarah Sealy and Frank Kemp did a review of things and reviewed Appendix D and made some revisions and acknowledged that there is the opportunity to make individual spot changes as needed to the charter. So I, I think that we're proceeding in a way that the RTM should hopefully welcome. They may not agree with what we'd like them to do, but procedurally I think we're okay in making suggested modifications. So, you know, begin to pull out your charter. It's not that easy to navigate, I would say. It's not my favorite document.
No.
It's not intuitive.
Where do we find this?
On the web.
It's online. It's called the Town Code.
It's searchable.
If you want, there is a book that you can have, but the book is not as useful as the web.
Yeah.
Got too many books already.
So just start and just go one by...
Yeah, if you, you know, you go under government, click on that and it goes down to Town Code and it is, it is searchable, imprintable.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Right, the gifts might be in that.
Gifts are definitely in that.
Okay.
Do a search on gifts and you'll find it appears in multiple places.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anything else? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah moves.
Kip seconds.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kate?
Yes. I do want to feedback on this grant agreement that suggested...